You need a minute?
Bob, aren't we just putting out a sound now?
He's ready, Bob, but I just want to get Michelle, um...
Yeah, I'm just having to copy this for everybody. Something went wrong.
Hey, Aunt, can you hear us? Auntie Espizito?
Okay.
Yep, I hear you.
Uh, may need you, uh...
Okay.
You good? Okay, no, we're good. Just a little, little, uh, stumble on the internet there, but we're good. Okay, Bob?
Well set.
Yep, well set.
This is Revised Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council Meeting of the North, of North Bradford, Connecticut, Tuesday, July 7th, 2020, in the Town Council Chambers at seven, 7:10 PM. I want to start with the, with a salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our...
Michelle, roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Diamond? We see you.
Yeah, she's here.
Councilor Duddy?
Yes, here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Godd, who's absent tonight. Councilor Paternoster?
Here.
And Councilor Pellicia?
Here.
Okay, move into the minutes of previous meeting, June 16th, 2020, Town Council Meeting.
Make a motion to further minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion, motion was made by, uh, Councilor Duddy, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Uh, any discussion?
Just one, one comment. Um, Michelle captured her accurately. I, uh, I misspoke and said Jessica Hatano as the new director. It's Jessie. Uh, but I did say Jessica, so just, just...
So Jessie, J.E.S.S.I.E.
Yes.
That's my wrong, so we'll forget it.
It wasn't your mistake, it was my mistake. You captured it.
That's not a big deal, it's fine, it's all right.
Okay, have a vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next is, uh, June 29th meeting, uh, Special Meeting of the Town Council, June 29th, 2020.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Who said it first?
Lou. Lou got it.
Lou, okay, we're gonna give it to Lou. Motion made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Paternoster. Uh, any discussion? Um, vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Mike, can you tell her I'm abstaining?
Okay, one abstention from Councilor Diamond. Thank you, Marie.
Thank you, Marie.
Okay, uh, next we'll move into the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, Correspondence and Citizen Statements. Nothing. Uh, unfinished business? Nothing. We'll move into new business. Request to connect, uh, to Sanitary Sewers, 1512 Middletown Avenue, map 67C Lot 69 White Hollow, Middletown Avenue Sanitary Sewers.
Good evening. I'll just give you a brief overview of the request. Um, the request is for the property, the house located on it at 1512 Middletown Avenue, connect to the Sanitary Sewers in Route 17. I'm, uh, just to give you an idea of where that location is, it's a little south of the entrance to the Middletown Tavern on the opposite side of the street. Couple houses up there. This, this house is on about three-quarter acre parcel with some limitations on that. In order to connect into Route 17, the Route 17 Sanitary Sewers governed by the White Hollow Middletown Avenue sewer ordinance. And there's some restrictions on that and caveats that have to be met if anybody wants to connect into the Sanitary Sewer. There is capacity for it. It was left in there for, for existing homes along, uh, Route 17. And again, there's a process they have to go through where there's four conditions that they have to meet. Basically, the four conditions are, there has to be an existing building lot, an existing home, the time of application, so they've met that. East Shore has to determine that it's either, if there's non-reparable septic system or it's not feasible to make a repair. There is a lettering there from East Shore District Health stating restrictions on the lot and they recommend connection to the Sanitary Sewer. Um, lot can't diminish the capacity for the rest of the area, uh, due to, it does a limited capacity, Sanitary Sewer line on Route 17. It's only one lot, so there's minimum discharge, so that criteria is met. And the fourth and final criteria, that's in the ordinance, no longer applies. Um, it was put in there under the conditions of the BP grant loan agreement. 2017, they said that they no longer monitor that and that no longer applies to their requirements. So basically, um, they've met the criteria, um, and there's a suggested motion for your consideration. Couple things to point out in the motion, it's a standard, uh, it's a standard motion. The important thing is they have to pay a $12,300 special connection fee prior to taking out the Sanitary Sewer permit. That, and the other one is they have to enter into a agreement, uh, prepared by the municipality for finalizing all these conditions. Again, there is a suggested motion.
I, I'd like to make a motion, um, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I'd like to make the motion as presented to us, and it's on page 31, um, in our iPad in the packet. And Michelle, I take it you have this also, right? Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by, uh, Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Uh, any discussion, any further discussion? Can we have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Next is, uh, possible change to regulations for layout and assessment of sanitary sewers regarding designated transit recreational vehicle parking spaces.
That item was discussed, uh, quite a bit, uh, previously. It's subject to a public hearing at 7:30. Hopefully after the public hearing, you can come back to the general discussion and see if there's a consensus on how to avoid it.
Okay. All right, uh, next we'll move into citizen statements and petitions. Wait, do we have anything?
Nothing for WPCA, no.
Okay.
Oh wait, um, unless the, uh, we'll wait for the hearing on, on, yeah. No, no petitions of correspondence, no.
Okay. Uh, regular Town Council Meeting. Uh, reports from committees, boards and commissions. Economic Development Commission, Roger Sallivay's monthly, uh, report.
The EDC met last night, um, and it was a, uh, rather light agenda, um, for them, but they did, um... The next advanced manufacturing meeting is going to be held on August 18th. Um, there was discussion, because the Poco Fest is canceled this year, um, of some... They've been trying to think of some kind of an idea for the businesses, um, as to what they can do to replace, um, Under the Tent, which is usually held the night before the Poco Fest. So they're still kicking around some ideas as far as what that might, if they are gonna pair it up with, they have Earth Science Week, that is in October, I believe, um, so they may do something with that. Um, they also did talk about the solar project, um, which is on our agenda later also. Um, and then, um, Roger had his, they're continuing ahead with the Pollinator Pathway Program and also the sunflower seeds. Um, they have a number of packets that are ready for pickup from residents, um, to plant sunflowers. I know they're, I think they're planted at Town Hall here, 'cause I saw them coming up, um, some of the rows. And they also, um, there's a Pollinator Pathway section that, um, a resident had planted on the corner of Old Post Road and 17. Uh, Nancy Tipping had done that. Um, she's very active in this also. Um, so anyone wanting to get sunflower seeds, they're available, Roger.
At the libraries, at the libraries and at Town Hall.
Okay, so they're available at the two libraries and at the Town Hall to pick up packets, um, to plant. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Rose. Uh, next, Park and Recreation?
Um, I know they're calling a special meeting for next week. They're trying to get a meeting together, and I know there has been some issues, um, with our basketball hoops that were put back up on Memorial Court, um, and generating large, large groups of people, and most of them are not residents. Um, and we all got the letter, um, from a resident that he had emailed complaining of, um, the actions of the people that are there. Just the vulgarity, the music that is being played and how we can address these issues. So I know Park and Rec is also going to be looking at that to see once. And I think a lot of it is, is because, um, we, we put ours back up because the, the, according to the governor's, um, executive, or you know, that, that was opening up last week, but a lot of area towns did not. And so we're getting a lot of out-of-towners and like, our own residents can't play because they have no regard for the residents here. And I know there was going to be a call today, Michael, right, with...
Yes, yep, there was a call. I'll, I can cover that under my report.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so, so there is an issue with that, and, and it's, it's basically because the other towns don't have them up, so we're getting a lot of out-of-towners coming here and how we're gonna deal with that. So...
Okay. Thank you, Rose.
Mike, we haven't started yet, have we?
Uh, we have, it started here, yes. We're in, uh, we're in Item 7, Reports and Committees. We're under Item 7, Reports and Committees.
I'm sorry, I do on me.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're under Reports and Committees, we're now on Item 7, uh, C, Police Commission.
Thank you.
And Mike, can you say there was no meeting?
Yes, there was no meeting.
This is crazy. I'm gonna have to, we can hear you, Marie.
We can, they can hear you fine.
They can hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Got you right by the speaker and the, and the microphone.
Okay.
We can see you too.
Okay, so nothing on Police Commission?
I can't hear them, but he can hear me.
Okay, nothing, nothing on Police Commission. We'll move to Fire Commission. Come on, do you have anything?
Yeah, just real quick. They, they had a meeting last week. Um, the, uh, chief rolled out a new organizational chart, which hopefully is going to, uh, help them operate a little bit more efficiently and doles out the responsibilities to the different, um, assistant chiefs. Also, there's some work going on at the ambulance company, Company 4. They're, they're, uh, expanding their supply closet there, um, which is gonna allow them to be more organized, and I guess it really wasn't safe the way it was. And it's also gonna increase, um, the amount of, um, supplies that they're able to, to store in-house, which, as we found out with COVID, um, is really important that we, we have enough supplies stocked up and stuff like that. So they're, they're doing that. Uh, they're also gonna start looking into the purchase possibly of a new ambulance, um, as the ambulances currently are being repaired quite often. And so they're gonna look to try to save some money maybe with a new purchase. Um, and then he just covered, you know, through the, uh, through the budget season, we appro, we appropriated money for, uh, the purchase of air packs and a few other things, and, uh, the chief just reported that, uh, those purchases have been made. And, uh, as far as being up to date on, uh, on supplies and, and things throughout the fire department, they're, they're in good shape and should be good for a while, so. That's it.
Thanks, Rose. Uh, next we have the Board of Education and Town, uh, Town Council Communication Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Okay, next, uh, Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Nothing. Uh, next is Planning and Zoning Commission?
Uh, I didn't attend the June meeting, but, um, their next meeting's Thursday, July 9th.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next we have North Bradford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
That committee met on June 24th. There's a lot of information from that meeting in the packet. The next meeting is July 15th.
All right, thank you, Marie. Next is Finance Subcommittee?
Um, there's been no meeting.
Okay, next, next we have Ad, Ad Hoc Design Review Committee.
Yeah, they, they, they met and are going to reconvene. I don't have the date on that, but that'll be, uh, later in July. And there's a lot of, of information, obviously, to digest there with the Borings environmental, uh, issues and, uh, work with, uh, um, the committee. So I'll have to get a report for the next meeting on the 21st.
Okay.
We're supposed to meet on the 14th, Mike, at the Ad Hoc.
Great, uh, thank you, okay.
The 14th?
14th.
Where do those meetings take place? Are they here?
Yeah. Unless they, um, yeah, I mean, we did a site visit, last time was a site visit, uh, at the high school.
Right.
This will be back here on the 14th.
Okay. All right, next we have, uh, move into the public hearing.
That's not 7:30 yet. We can't start it.
Okay, we gotta wait a few minutes.
You can go into the town managers', you can start the town managers'.
Can we do that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Just keep going.
All right, let's do the, the town manager's report. You wanna do that, Mike?
Yeah, no problem, I'll jump right in.
7:30, we'll start the other one.
Yeah, uh, so the COVID-19, uh, update, I had submitted a memo to you based on the numbers at the time. I, I, uh, composed the memo, it was July 1st, we were at, uh, 85 cases. Uh, we have ticked up, uh, three cases as of today to 88, uh, cases cumulative since the start of the pandemic. So, um, so relatively, uh, flat, um, with respect to our overall number of cases. Um, and I also mentioned, we started, uh, Town Hall hours for, um, the tax office, open Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 11:30, and then, uh, by appointment after that, if you can't make it during the morning hours. Uh, and the other departments are open by, by appointment as well. We have instituted, put in a drop box out front as well. Uh, taxpayers can still pay electronically, uh, with the fee is waived, uh, for those transactions. They can also put it in the secure drop box. We clear that box at 9 and 2 every day. Um, and if those don't work, then you can make an appointment or show up from 8:30 to 11:30. So, uh, in monitoring that, uh, we have a greeter at the door to escort people in and out. Uh, and our numbers, um, for the first couple of days, July 1st, 61 taxpayers, July 2nd, 41. Yesterday, 38, uh, today, 47. So it's, uh, pretty consistent, pretty steady, um, and we'll just continue to monitor that. Uh, the libraries are also open and, uh, they are doing fine. And I think the comments, uh, that I heard from Lauren Davis, the director, uh, that they're very happy, patrons are happy that, uh, that they're back open, uh, and they've obviously modified their services and their configuration there. Um, I also have numbers from Lauren Davis on, um, their patrons, uh, for July 1st. Atwater had 46, Smith had 48. Uh, July 2nd, Atwater had 35, Smith had 30. Uh, July 6th, uh, Atwater had 41 and Smith had 39. So I didn't get their totals, uh, today, but, uh, imagine that they're running roughly the same, anywhere from 65 to, to 90, anywhere in between, so...
That's good. Are they totally open, Michael?
Well, not, not totally, yeah, it's limited in terms of service, not totally open in how much time you, you can, you can, we're trying to get people in to get service, get their, their stuff, and, and of course, if they're, they're doing things, we're not kicking them out, but again, we're not encouraging, you know, the, the, you know, the long breaks and making it a second home kind of thing, you know? And that's unfortunate because it, it, it should, it has served that way, and it's, uh, it's, it's a nice, it's a nice amenity. If I have a library that you feel comfortable, then you can, you know, make yourself available to services that we provide. But all, overall, I think they understand and, and the staff is, is doing well and, uh, you know, everything's running smoothly so, thus far.
Good, good.
Uh, so I did, um, I also want to mention the, uh, fact that, um, we, we were on a call today, uh, with the Health Department with respect to the basketball courts, and, uh, there are a couple of factors in, in play here. Rose had mentioned, Councilor Angeloni had mentioned, um, the fact that the anticipated, uh, opening of Phase 3 did not happen. As many of you know, the governor pushed a pause button on that and, uh, it's not happening. Basketball is in a, uh, category of high risk, uh, and along with many other, um, sports like wrestling, boxing, football, lacrosse, uh, dance, rugby, um, so forth, ice hockey. Um, so it's a high-risk category, uh, and the, uh, guidance from the Health Department is to take those, um, basketball hoops down. Branford, East Haven have taken them down, kept them down. They did not put theirs back up. And as Rose mentioned, it generated a lot of activity here. Uh, I don't have the photos for you, I only got them an hour ago. Uh, but I do have the numbers in terms of how many, uh, people showed up to play basketball on the courts Thursday, approximately 54. Uh, Friday, 60, Saturday, 74, Sunday, 60. Those are approximate numbers, not exact count, uh, but, um, pretty darn close. I had another report, the numbers were off ju, just by a little. Those are, those are alarming numbers in my, in my mind, in my view, and, uh, in, in consultation with Mike, uh, making the recommendation to take those basketball hoops, I'm gonna direct the superintendent, Fran Marola, tomorrow to take those hoops down based on, on guidance, uh, from both the governor pushing off Phase 3 and, and the Health Department, and for us to be on the same, uh, page with our surrounding towns. It's just, if not, it's just going to get worse, I believe, in my opinion. It's gonna get worse as the only place open in, in, in town. So I think we gotta take them down out of abundance of caution and see where, uh, see what happens throughout the month of July and see where, uh, the governor and, and the Health Department want to do with the high-risk category.
Okay.
Uh, I'd be happy to share the, the pictures after the meeting and get those around if you're interested. It, it was pretty, uh, pretty intense, um, in terms of number of people. So the, the, those are high, very high numbers. Despite the effort to, to plaster with signage and so forth, just, it wasn't adhered to. Uh, that's essentially, that, that, that's my report at this point.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move into the, uh, public hearing.
I have questions.
Oh, go ahead.
So... Is it, it, a couple of things, Mike, I was just jotting down as you were talking. Is the Town Hall, um, um, manned 100% now, employees?
Yeah, not, not exactly 100%. I have a few exemptions, uh, in, in terms of employees, but essentially, yeah, I did call everybody back, uh, and, uh, with the exception of a handful, not all here at Town Hall, but I think two or three here in a modified flex schedule, working here, uh, for a part, s, few days a week and then remote working, uh, at home.
So, um, I, so then I'm assuming the greeter is probably an existing employee?
Uh, no, part, uh, part-time we brought in, uh, just to help out, uh, so didn't have somebody to pull from the other office. I tried to get, um, some from the rec department, but given their, their concerns, they didn't want to, uh, fill that position.
Okay, and then on the COVID-19 cases, um... 88, are they all active?
No.
Is that a...
No, that's just accumulative in, in, in terms of active. I, I don't have that number. I'd say relatively few that are active, but this is just since the start.
Yeah.
We've had a, a total of, of eight, 88 positive cases.
Now, so that nece, doesn't necessarily mean they were, um, showing symptoms. They just, part of that could have been they just weren't, um, tested positive?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify, just so I know, understand the numbers. And then, um... Has anyone recovered that we know of in town? Oh, besides Bob? I'm just, I'm just wondering about the, the stats, you know, I always hear that, that total number. I'm just wondering, you know, it, yeah, ticked up three more, but how are we, how are we doing as far as hea, health, health-wise?
Yeah.
Not necessarily...
Right, we've lost five individuals, um, and, and, and all others have, have recovered.
Okay, all right.
Those five are accounted for in the 88?
Yeah.
And then, um, with the basketball, doesn't, doesn't that, does that fall under, doesn't part of, um, what Governor Lamont said, something about, or maintaining gatherings of 100 or something? Did I read that somewhere?
Yeah, he's, you mean in terms of phases and how he's...
Right, right, right now, we're, we're gonna stick with the gatherings of 100. And I'm asking, does that, 54, you said 54 people showed to play basketball, does that, is that part of a hun, uh, uh, gathering of 100? I guess is what I'm asking.
I, I don't think it applies. I, I'm not sure, that's a great question, but I, I think the concern is in terms of the, the nature of the sport categorized as high-risk because of its, uh, close proximity, you know, and not having social distancing, as opposed to a social gathering in which you can social distance and have 50 or, or, or more.
I did drive, I did drive past there tonight, and there was, again, a large gathering. Um, I didn't take count. If I had to guess, there was 40-plus people, some people parking on the grass right off of Route 80 in their vehicles. And I did notice that in... Most everybody, I won't say none, but pretty close to none, had met, were wearing masks or anything like that, so...
Right.
And they were, you know, they were playing the game and they were all close together on the court, so...
Yeah, and, and I had, uh, Jessie, who obviously was on the, the call, the rec, rec, rec director, and I, I did, do wanted to defer to her for a, a moment if, uh, if she wants to add anything to, um, that discussion. Jessie, are you, are available? You want to add anything to that?
Hi, Michael, um, just that the recommendation from our call and the surrounding towns was due to the nature of the sport being high-risk that we maintain, um, take down our hoops and be in conjunction with everybody else. And then when we do open, um, looking at opening in a lesser capacity and in line with what other towns are doing.
Okay, thank you.
And then, one other question I have is, I know that, um, our courts and our fields are, are, uh, are for the residents of the town. But how do, uh, in a normal circumstance, how do we control that?
Pretty, uh, I mean, in terms of monitoring?
Well, is that, is that part of what the park ranger, uh, helps support or not? I'm, I'm just...
Yeah, it, um, hasn't been defined that way, could be, uh, I think internally, and maybe Jess, uh, you want to, uh, address that in, in terms of, I think the commission may have addressed it, I'm not sure, but with respect to, uh, um, the question was about whether or not, in terms of monitoring, I don't know if you heard it or not, but, uh...
I heard it.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so in regards to monitoring, we currently haven't, to my knowledge, regulated residents versus non-residents. That's not in the ranger's job description currently. It's something we can evaluate. The problem too becomes with, and I'm not, I apologize, I'm new to the town, I'm not familiar with the funding, but if any state funding was used in regards to those courts, there are restrictions on how you can restrict non-residents. You actually can't restrict non-resident use if any state funding was used at any part for the parking lot, anything like that. So, um, we would have to look back on what was used for the funding to, to see if we could even dis... So we would have to look back on what was used for the funding to, to see if we could even disqualify non-resident use.
Yeah, that, that won't qualify, because we did have state funding.
Right, so then even on, under normal, what I'd say were our previous circumstances before the pandemic, if, if, if out, if people from out of town were playing on the courts, well, that's just how it is.
Right. The only thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing during the summer is we would have a youth, we would have a summer rec league outsigned so that they would sign up for the, so they would have a permit actually for the, for the courts. Whether it was Monday through Friday or Monday through Thursday, and they might have it from six to nine or whatever they ran. So they would have first preference.
Right.
But I don't believe that rec league is running this summer, correct? Not, right, the summer league, I believe, is not running, so, so with the court, so no one would have a permit. So they would just be open all the time.
Okay.
But if it was, then they would take preference.
Right, okay. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Mike, you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do the, the public hearing regarding regulations for layout and assessment of sanitary sewers.
So there was, I printed out, hopefully it's in your, in your folder, the correspondence to public comment was from Don, Don Capelli. So this will be a printout in your folder for that.
Do we have to read the notice of the public hearing?
Oh, yes, right. I, yeah, because it's a continuation, right?
Well, it's not a continuation, but it's?
No, it's, it's a new public hearing.
New, I'm sorry. Yes, you have, I, I have that if you don't?
Well, I have it here under a few. Tom, are you going to read it or did you? It's page forty in the iPad.
So notice of a public hearing pursuant to Connecticut Executive Order Seventy-One, Section Nineteen C. Suspension, modification, and clarification of certain municipal procedural requirements and time limitations regarding notice commencement and holding of public hearings, decisions, and appeals. Any covered, any covered law requiring a municipality or agency to publish any notice or notices in a newspaper of general or substantial circulation is suspended and modified to allow a single notice to be published electronically on a municipality's or agency's website. The North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July seventh, two thousand twenty, at seven-thirty PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers and/or via Totucket TV slash Facebook Live. Public comment will be taken through email at public comments at townofnorthbranfordct.com. Facebook post and direct dial four-seven-five-six-five-five-zero-four-zero-zero. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed revisions to the regulations for layout and assessment of sanitary sewers. The proposed revisions to the regulations for layout and assessment of sanitary sewers are to add the provision that designated transient recreational vehicle parking spaces with connections for sanitary sewer hookups shall be recovered at the rate of one-third unit per authorized connection under the units to be charged under determination of sewer assessment rates. Public on, public comments on this matter are welcome. A copy of the proposed revisions are on file in the office of the Town Clerk and posted on the town's website dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this tenth day of June, two thousand twenty. North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority.
If I could just add, in the regulations for layout and assessment of sanitary sewers, the revision on page eight and nine, and again, it's just adding a section, basically, and I'm just going to read it. Under residential zones, I to B, we're adding, notwithstanding one A above, which talks about residential units for dwelling units. Not one A above, designated transient recreational vehicle parking spaces with connections for sanitary sewer hookups shall be recovered at the rate of one-third unit per authorized connection. The other changes are just really paragraph structuring. Again, the intent is to apply a different connection rate to transient recreational vehicle parking spaces. The concept, when I put it together, looking at it, at the request of the owner to see if it was feasible, was to look at the generally flow generated by a recreational vehicle versus a normal home. And I came up with one-sixth of a unit in, in the ratio to a, a normal home. But being conservative, we apply the rate of one-third per unit to the recreational vehicle sites. That was the concept that we ended with. We're open for any kind of discussion on it at this point. And again, this doesn't allow for a particular, this is global overall with the town and the regulation. If anyone wanted to apply, if, if this were to be enacted and applied for, they would have to make a request to WPCA for an actual connection, then, then we would look at specifics of that connection.
So that's about forty-one hundred per unit?
That's correct.
So just clarification, one-third, you're, you're, you mean one-third of a, say, a house?
One-third of a, a unit, and, and the house is a unit.
It's twelve-three.
For a, for a, a home.
For a home and then one.
Right.
That's what reduces it, so, okay.
What will the charge be for somebody who is a permanent resident of the park on a long-term lease?
So the transient recreational ones are not, they're not permanent, you just.
Okay, but in the park, of all?
Mobile home units, again, are, in the regulations, there is something, the age restricted. Again, we have to, we discussed that, I think the town attorney looked at, he, he would have, if they were to come in and apply for it, he would have, have an agreement regarding that. But age restricted, they're at a rate of two thousand dollars per unit, per current regulations.
But he's not asking for any?
He's not asking for them.
He's only asking for the recreational vehicles at this time.
That's what he's asking for at this time. Again, he hasn't come in with an obligation to connect, he's talked about it and he's expressed a concern that a transient recreational parking space is paying, would be paying such a high rate. He felt it was, you know, not feasible to, to do. And again, I think they generate.
What, what is, what is the population of that park? That's the only park we have, but?
That's the only park.
All right, so let's not talk in generality, we're talking about one space.
They have fifteen, the question came up, there's fifteen transient sites for recreational vehicles, ones they'll apply for under this regulation. He has forty-seven mobile home units.
All right, so I have a mobile home unit, I'm not qualified senior, what do I pay?
They're paying two thou, if they're age restricted, they're two thousand dollars.
I'm not age restricted, I'm forty-two years old, what do I pay?
You're paying twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, so in fact, and the mobile home doesn't get any consideration over?
Well, it, it does because he says that that section is HUD-approved and age-restricted.
So it's all age-restricted?
The mobile home, that's what I've been told, that's correct.
I don't think the transients are though.
Transients are not. Transients are not, so they would be under, they would fall under this definition.
So he's looking for a discount because he's saying that the sewer usage is not going to be that of a?
It's nominal compared to a normal house.
Right.
Because they're not there for a year.
How do we police the occupancy of the age-restricted units? And how do we police whether or not fifteen designated transient units are indeed only occupied by transient users?
We'd have to, we'd have to put that into any approval that maybe have an annual verification, certification of that. The town attorney had started to address the concept in some type of agreement. We hadn't gotten that far yet. But I would think we would, we, we, you're, you're, I'm just saying, correct, we want to verify, when they come in for an application, we need an engineer plan showing a layout and what would be connected and how they would be connected. You know, you have to be able to monitor that and verify that, that it hasn't grown.
So the transient, my guess would be, would be in one section, they're not intermittent amongst the mobile homes, there's a?
That's correct.
And so he would have a, like a plot plan or something to show us that here are the fifteen?
Here's fifteen sites.
And here are the three or four or however many he wanted to originally hook up because?
And the details of the sewer connection, because they have to have a connection point for each of the sites.
Those transit sites would be really subject to winter restrictions because there's no way that water will flow in the winter.
Yeah, unless you have sometime, you know, if you have a heated system around it, you've got to keep everything freezing.
Right, so. You don't have to worry, you don't have to worry about freezing it in the winter and be the summer, spring, and fall.
How many sites is he requesting though? Initially?
What he has, he was only talking to two, three initially, initially, he was just talking about connecting three additional units over there. Total, what he indicated, he had fifteen transient sites and he was, it's forty-seven mobile home units.
Right, but he's not, he's not looking?
He's not applying for that at this point.
He just wants to hook up three initially and then?
And then.
Whatever.
I think his long-term plan would be to connect the, the facility to sanitary sewers. When he came in and he built his building on the Tuckett Road.
He put a subsidy, didn't he put?
He, he put an additional line in there for capacity while he was doing it. And he, you know, he discussed that, but the regulations were in place. But he just, it was easy to put the provision in there at that time and then deal with it later.
So for those three spots, you're getting just about what one house would be as far as fees?
Yeah, you get the twelve-three.
That would be correct.
So Kurt?
Do we have to read that?
Kurt, where did the one-sixth come from? That was his?
No, that, that's what I looked at in terms of, looking at the State Health Department, when they generate flows, they said, I think it was something to the effect of seventy-five gallons per day per, per unit versus a home generates more like four hundred gallons per day per unit.
So how'd the one-sixth go to one-third?
Well, I, I, that was an arbitrary number, I was trying to be conservative. I did not try, I didn't want to go down to one-sixth, I'd rather go to one-third to be a little conservative. And that was open for discussion, but that was my rationale behind it, because they're all, they're estimates. And I was trying to err on the side of more cautious thinking.
So if we had asked you to pick a number, what would you pick?
Well?
Between one-sixth and one-third?
Well, I, I picked the third, it, it, it seemed reasonable, because it's, again, you're dealing with estimates and I, I wanted to estimate on the more cautious side. That's why I came up with the third. Because one-sixth, that's, it's not a definitive number, that's a ballpark.
Have we been in contact with any other towns that may have the same?
I, I, I tried. And the first thing I did was try to look out and see if there are other towns that had campground in, with sanitary sewers in. I couldn't find any. Most of the campgrounds in these parts of state, they don't have sewers or rural areas. He's the unusual one that sewers.
Did you call Branford? Because Branford has one right on Route One.
Well, they don't, those are mobile home units, those are the recreational vehicles.
So forty, he has, so the other forty-seven sites he has are basically mobile home?
Those are mobile home units.
And those are all age-restricted?
That's what he's, that's what he's expressed, that they are age-restricted. And, and that was a concern, how do you, we verify that long-term, as long as they're there, that they have to be. The town attorney had sort of worked something out on that, but it's too early to present that. But he felt there was something that could be in place to guarantee that. Like that was a concern that came up with this board.
Yeah, that's the only concern I have is during the wintertime, these units aren't, this sewer's not going to be used at that location.
Some of you, you can, sometimes you can put heat tape on them and then if you protect them?
That's good if you could get the water in there, how do you get the water in there?
You gotta, you gotta get the water going in and, and the sewer's going out. But if, but you get cold weather, it, it, they're, they're problems. That's something, I, I think, I think you're correct a lot of times.
So that, that's where my, that's where my opinion of the one-third might be a little bit high because these probably won't be used in the wintertime.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, he's aware of it. I was upfront right at the beginning, that, that I went through the rationale of how we calculated it. That can be, that's subject, that's, it's.
What was his take on the one-third?
He, he was okay with that. I mean, obviously, he preferred lower, but he understood the rationale behind where it came from.
Is, is this a seasonal park? Not the mobile home park, the transient, is it seasonal?
Well, he has, and I think he has some sort of weather.
No, yeah, so there's not a cutoff, you know, start date and a cutoff date?
Not, uh, opens April first and ends October first. No, because they get, but he gets, I think, a lot of people working in the area, they come up from somewhere else and they stay for six months or three months because they're doing a job somewhere.
So Mike, what were you concerned with failure?
No, my concern was, was the wintertime.
That's right.
Those will freeze up quick, you know, and there's no way he's going to get work in there. I knew one of the guys that worked for the power lines, putting the big overhead power lines in, he was up here, they come up here, you know, in the spring and then they leave in the fall because they really don't work on the power lines over the winter.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's just too cold. And, you know, if it's a third, you know, might be a little bit too much for too long a period of time. You know, that's a third of that sewer connection fee for the year.
Yeah, I, I did want to give the store away. I wanted to start somewhere then.
But he only pays it once, but he can still, he still, I mean, he only pays it once and then he just keeps renting out those spaces every year, so it's not like he pays it every time a transient.
Well, there would be a user fee, wouldn't there?
Yeah, the user fee is separate.
There'd be a user fee, you have to pay the annual user fee, you know, if they suddenly change anything on that, they still pay that one unit.
And he'll be saving money because he won't have to pump out as much.
Now, I think the residents require, the transient resident would be required to have the septic system or whoever pumps out their trailers. Must be somebody that comes through that pumps out the trailers that are connected.
Well, now, aren't they hooked up right now into a septic?
They're on septic.
That's what I mean, so he'll be saving.
The transients?
Yeah.
Transients are on, and I think he's talking about maybe the additional, I'm not a hundred percent sure that's, whether he, it's an additional three or, he, he wants to start with the, the first three. Maybe there's a problem, right, over that area with septic, I'm not, but his first concern was the hookup, a few of them. And then this is a long-term, you know, the hookup would be a phased approach, I think it's an economic, it's a point of no problem.
But it, back to the winter.
Yeah.
Is, is there a possibility that the system fails and doesn't work because it freezes and then we have a contamination issue?
No, well, I mean, it'd be, he'd rather be, he, he has to put pumps, he has to put pumps in there, and they're below grade, they're, they're freeze-protected.
Okay.
And let's see, that is a reason.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
But Ron, Ron, you know from draining your tank?
It's a line from the unit.
In the wintertime, you know, from the unit down to the ground.
Right.
But the, the only other thing I'm thinking of, and I'm, I'm not an expert by any means on it, is the other mobile homes are not that much different than a recreational vehicle. A lot of them are still on, on wheels and axles and they're, they're hooked up year-round, so I'm just. So I'm just wondering, you know, they're able to deal with it. There must be a way for.
There's a way to.
The RVs to deal with it too, you know?
If someone's going to be there for six months through the winter, they've got to fix it.
Right. But you, but to your point, Mike, it, it would be, the amount of, I would imagine the amount of transient people going through there in the wintertime would be far, far less than over the summer.
Yeah. There's more contractors, he has nurses, people come to Yale, the expertise expressed that he has for transits.
That's all I had.
Kind of way. All right, and, and there is one correspondence, it's from the owner of the Tucker Valley Mobile Home and RV Park. And I'll read it quickly. Dear Count, Town Council, please carefully consider the change which will greatly improve our ability to start converting our park from fifty-year-old septic systems to modern sewers. As you may know, our park waters the Farm River, which is an RWA watershed area. We feel it is, is in everyone's best interest to connect this to the San Therry Sewer system. As we have multiple recreational vehicle sites, this change would allow us to financially be able to make these connections. At the current rate of twelve thousand four hundred dollars per unit, the fee is cost prohibitive for an RV site that is not consistently occupied. This would not pertain to or affect mobile home units in the park because they are already HUD regulated, age restricted. Thank you for your consideration, Towne Patel, Kelly Junior, Tuckerland Holding, LLC, Tucker Valley Mobile Home and RV Park. I did, as a public hearing, I, I did write up anything or motion one way or the other. But, but, but my thought was based upon feedback from the council, if you put it on the next agenda or an action. I'm just trying to get a, a sense of what the feelings are or concerns. I could write up a draft for your consideration at the next meeting, a little help from the town attorney.
Yeah, I, it would help me if you had a discussion with any and it came back with some ideas as to just how this is going to be enforced. A little bit concerned about charging one-third and theoretically they're there. Mike says it's impossible to be there in the winter. I'll take that as, as accurate, but two-thirds of the years they're there, yeah? I assume, uh, they're, they're generating sewage, so I'd like to know that we can police it and it's not a permanent resident, but it is somebody coming, um.
Yeah.
What, what are you charging them for a user fee on that lot?
I didn't, didn't change anything on that. I mean, user fee, they're, they're a unit, so they take the unit rate.
Which is?
Which is, whatever you say, it's four fifty, four seventy-five.
A year.
Per year.
So he'll charge them back to the, uh?
Yeah, so they're, so, because we don't differentiate between a five-bedroom house and a one bedroom, or, or, or one-bedroom house. Our regulations are, are dwelling units, dwelling units. So I can seek to make an adjustment in that. He didn't ask for that. He accepted that part.
This is just a fee to the town, right? He's still responsible for paying to have the, the sewers hooked, the actual work done?
Because of the work is all on him. And, and to make, he's got to put pumping station or, or two in there. Those are his operating things.
And what do you?
He, he has the ability, I mean, what, what he pays for is the ability to, to discharge his RSA and third sewers and be rid of that.
Do we have any idea what that's going to cost them?
Uh, I'd be, I'd be lying if I, because I don't know where the layout is and that.
Yeah.
Well, I think that, you know, next meeting's fine, we'll get some input from our town attorney and, and also, this is a public hearing and maybe town residents may have a, some comments or someone else may have a comment. Right?
You're going to talk to the property owner between them? He knows?
Yeah, I, I've been talking to him all along and, and shared everything with him, just so he knows what the thought process is and, um, you know, what the issues are.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Joe, you had, you had, you had questions?
No, but I, I think Kurt understands how my concern is, he shares it, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to talk to Vinnie by before the next meeting, so maybe he can come back and give us some, some additional information or comfort as to how they're going to.
What I am trying to say is, is trying to just address any concern or how they would be addressed and then have a motion from company or that can be applied to. Okay.
Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
So do we have to continue the public hearing or we can close it?
Yeah, that's, that's your call there, right Kurt? I mean, you can go either way.
It's a public hearing, let's just say, for a public comment.
Do you want to check and see if there was any public comments?
Yeah.
I mean, most likely the only public comment.
Was Don's that you read?
I mean, because, because that's the only one it'll probably apply to unless something changes in town.
No, no other comments?
Okay, so we have to close it?
You can close the public hearing. Yes. There's no reason to keep it open.
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll close that. Public hearing and, uh, move in, move into, uh, community, community events and presentations.
Mayor, could you just call the time for the clerk, uh, closing the public hearing?
Okay. Uh, eight oh, eight oh five.
Thank you.
And then does it need to be a motion to yourself?
I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll clear it up. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at eight oh five PM.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilor Dury, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Any further discussion? Do we have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Okay. We'll move into, uh, community events and presentations.
None, I'm sorry, none.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, then we'll move into citizen statements, petitions and correspondence. Correspondence from, uh, A is correspondence from Courtney Cucinata regarding Indigenous People Day. Do you have anything on that, Mike?
Uh, no, just for, for your, uh, for you in consideration, um, you know, not sure if that's something the council wants to deliberate on.
I don't know what we do with it.
It's in the record.
It's in the record, submitted. You don't have to take action.
So then it's, then it's all set?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, next, next is resignations and appointments.
None.
There aren't any. Uh, so we'll move to unfinished business, discussion and action. Discussion on RFQ slash P for North Bramford Police Facility Architectural and Engineering Service.
Right, so we're engaged with, uh, Bill Silver and, uh, he submitted the reviser updated, um, uh, contract proposal. So it's there for your review and consideration. And he has included a timeline that he went through with the advisory committee at the last meeting and walked through, uh, these items. There's a item, if you go to, I think it's page four of the compensation. I know the, uh, item, the, I guess it's the, uh, item four, construction administration, uh, could be the one item I think you might want to discuss or talk about. And or get a recommendation from the committee in terms of, uh, construction administration. Uh, but essentially this, uh, has been reviewed by Vin Marino as well, um, looks in order, just revise, uh, numbers to take you all the way through, uh, the final construction, uh, the, the project for the PD.
Okay.
So do we have to approve tonight whether we want construction administration or is this something that we can decide? Like if we approved this and we decided we wanted a clerk of the works ourself, that we don't need, you know, to pay, um, Silver Petrazzulli.
Yeah.
We just don't do that part of the contract.
Great, great question, and I think you're, I think you got the, the timing. I would recommend that, you know, this is for your consideration. That's one of the questions that, you've got the committee meeting on the, uh, next, next week on the fifteenth. Uh, so it's in time in terms of having them, you know, discuss it as well, make a recommendation, come back here for the council for the twenty-first. Would you like to do it that way?
You really need to gear them up for their design services. Construction administration.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's further down.
Right, that's why I didn't.
So I'd rather, I'd rather hear from Al Rose and his group as to, particularly from Alice and what he thinks we should or shouldn't do before we commit spending more money.
Well, the police station is not, I didn't think we sent it to the ad hoc review committee. It's at, it's with the other, it's with the PD committee.
And he's not part of that?
Yeah, Al, Al's part of that.
Al's on that one?
Yeah.
Also, oh, okay, sorry.
A couple of years ago, I specifically asked, is he on, is he a construction subcommittee? Because the, the police department advisory committee is having another meeting, so.
Okay, yeah, they're going to meet back to back, fourteenth, fifteenth, yeah.
So are, are they, is the advisory committee for the police department, do we need to approve anything to get to schema, so they can start on schematics? Or are we waiting for them to meet next week?
They're, they're already, they're already proceeding and, and again, this is just.
Silver Petrazzulli is already proceeding with schematic, oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, nothing's holding up, that, that I'm aware of, nothing's holding them up. I'm probably gathering the information. Kurt was able to supply information with respect to gas and, and, and I know that they're working, uh, to gather information. So, yeah, it, it's on track and they're going to meet next week, so. I think we can line everything up for, uh, you know, their meeting and then your future meeting on the twenty-first.
So this, this fee that's quoted in here, two ninety-seven, seven fifty, that's already been approved or do we need to act on that?
Well, I think you'll want to, you'll want to, you'll want to act on that on the twenty-first and knowing whether or not, uh, or having a recommendation as to whether or not you're going to add in the construction fee or, or pull that out.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll, it'll just, I guess, a motion to table that and we can, uh, bring that back for the twenty-first.
So would it make sense on the twenty-first to have a representative here from that police department committee to help advise us on?
Or at least a report.
Or a report or something so that we know how to act on it?
Mike, you're, you're on that.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, Mike.
Mike's on that committee.
And so is Marie, right?
Right.
Okay.
So we have two council people.
Okay. I need a, do I need a motion to table that?
I'll make a motion to table it.
All right.
Second.
Motion was made by, uh, Councilor Dury, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Any further discussion? Have a vote, please, Michelle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay. Next we have a discussion on solar power project with Citrine Power tabled, uh, from June sixteenth, two thousand twenty.
Hi, um, two weeks ago I asked for information on, uh, contact and locations of this. I haven't received it yet, so I'm making a motion to table that till that next meeting and hopefully we'll get those, that information first.
Well, I think, uh, Seel is, Chell is here, uh, and I think Roger has the, um.
Well, I, I didn't get that information, so that's why I'm making a motion to table it. I don't think we should be going any further until the information we requested two weeks ago is on our desk. And we get a chance to go and look at the sites or contact people. So that's my motion as the table.
Yeah, they're, they're here and they can, I'm just, they're here to present and they have information they can go through in a presentation.
I can't, I didn't hear, I didn't hear what she said.
She's just echoing the same thing I just said, or I echoed what she said about in terms of information is here and she has information that she can present. And that's the purpose of, uh, being on the agenda to present.
You have information tonight?
I, I already sent the information, Mike.
Well, we never got it.
Well, you have, yeah, you have.
I, I have, I emailed our contact information already.
And sites?
Yeah.
It's funny, goes there and then just stops.
Well, we have sites, but we don't have confirmation. We don't, unless Roger has something.
But two weeks ago we asked for sites and locations that we go out and look at, and that's the reason I asked for that information two weeks ago. And we never received it.
Okay. What, what if we keep your mo, your motion, Mike, and we listen to what they have to say?
Well, as long as you get a second, we can keep it. Motion out there.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilor Dury, seconded by Deputy Mayor, uh, Zampano.
To table.
Any, any discussion?
Yeah, just for clarification, because the discussion has been going on back and forth with the audience. We are voting on what, tabling this item?
Yes.
Even though we've got people here with information that can share with us. We asked two weeks ago for information. Right, I, I'm not criticizing you. We haven't, we haven't got that. She said it's, it was, it was sent, we never got it. So in order to get, go out and look at the sites so we could have some discussion back and forth as to what the sites are portraying and what they look like and what they don't look like. Now again, we're going to hear another presentation on, on this, on the same site where we don't know if it's right, wrong or indifferent on their previous sites. I, I hear you. I, I, your criticism's a fair one. Just want to know what I'm voting on. That's it.
Well, well, the other, the other thing, you know, we second it so we can have discussion. So should, should we, um, let them, let the power company make their presentation so we know where, what changes they may or may not have made?
Well, unfortunately, it's not the power company's fault that we didn't get the information.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it is, but I'm, what I'm saying is.
I mean, I, I feel bad for punishing them. If she, if, if she never sent it, then I would say, come back in two weeks.
Right.
You know?
Do we have any discussion from the council members?
Well, the, the discussion right now is.
To hearing what they have to say. I don't see how that in any way prejudices us. But I understand Mike's criticism, it's, it's a reasonable.
You got to do two.
I think we should definitely table it until we have the information that we requested. But I also think that she was nice enough to come on here tonight. She has a little bit of information or additional information.
I have no problem hearing her because it's not her fault. So I can't, I can't put the blame on her. But before you leave, you should get our email addresses so you can send it to each person. So there's no mistake in the future.
Mr. Mayor, this is Elizabeth Kaplan. May I, I'm the chair of the Economic Development Commission. May I speak for a moment, please?
Aye, of course.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
I'm so sorry, it is very hard to hear.
Wait, wait a minute, Liz, hang on a minute.
So, I mean, the motion's on the floor and it's been seconded for discussion, so, so is the motion, I mean, it was to table, is it to table not to take any action? But we'll listen to the presentation or is it just to stop the discussion right now?
I just have a question. So I got what you're coming from, Mike, all right? So my understanding up to this point, if I'm correctly, is that she sent the information in, it just never was translated to us. Am I correct? Am I correct? I'm not pointing at you, Michael.
Yeah, no, it's, I, I get it.
We failed as North Bramford to get it out to us.
Right. Mine was, yeah, and I pushed out a lot of information in terms of Citrine Power and, um, you know, the, the contract, the, the service. We were looking at, Mike had asked, or whoever had asked about, you know, location, location.
I got it.
Locations, and we have locations, uh, in terms of addresses and references we were going to check and, and Roger has, has, has done that, has, I don't, the, last time I had a conversation I had with Roger, he has not heard back from them.
That wasn't the discussion. It wasn't have Roger check it out. It was for us to have that information. for us to have that information.
Mike, I agree with what you're saying.
For us to check it out.
But I agree with what you're saying, but I also, we use people pain, and like you said, I don't think they've done anything wrong.
No.
So I think we owe it to them to listen to them, and your concern should be taken.
I certainly don't want, I certainly don't want to look through Roger's eyes at a sight.
No, I, I understand that, because the problem, my problem is.
Roger may have rose-colored glasses and not see what I see.
Mike, I understand that, I agree with you, but my issue is, is that these people came out, they stopped very patiently, and they did nothing wrong.
That's why I said, they did nothing wrong, and I have no problem listening to them.
That's, you and I are on the same page, brother.
Then why don't we listen to them? I don't know what to do with the motion.
We've gotta deal with this motion that's on the floor, either withdraw it or vote on it. We take no action tonight, but we listen to our discussion.
Seems fine to me.
I agree.
And we'll look at it again in two weeks.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Who was that, Lou?
Yeah.
Okay, Michelle, did, did you get over that?
Got it.
I know, but the other motion was to table, right?
It's gotta be withdrawn.
Yes, so that has to be withdrawn and.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so that, that motion's been withdrawn, and the new motion is to, right? Not take any action, but listen to the, to what they have to present.
The motion was made by Councilor Duddy, seconded by Councilor Pat Anaster.
Right.
I'm not gonna say any further discussion. No, is there any more discussion on that? No?
No. We've confused ourselves enough.
Uh, Michelle, can we have a vote on that?
Which one?
We're gonna take no action, but we're gonna listen to the presentation from the people from Citrine.
So, the motion withdrawn by, um, Councilor Duddy and Deputy Mayor Zampano, and then the motion to take no action, but hear the information made by Duddy and Councilor Pat Anaster, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you.
Okay, did you wanna, could she come up to the table here?
Sure.
Mike.
And, uh, yeah, we may have, I gotta release this screen, if, are you gonna do a slide?
Good evening, I think there was, while I'm trying to power up, somebody wanted to say something, I think, but I'm trying to gain some time, because my Zoom is not working right now.
So Liz had asked if she could say.
Yeah, Liz had a question, Liz, are you there?
She's unmute, she got mad.
Liz, uh, you wanna unmute?
Yeah.
Mayor is recognizing you to speak.
Are you there?
You're, you gotta unmute again.
Mike's not on, Liz.
There you go.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor and council members, I, I apologize, it's, I have my volume on my computer up all the way, and it's really hard to hear the discussion in, in the town hall, and, and thank you for giving Citrine the opportunity to present tonight, I, I understand all of your concerns, we understand all of your concerns, the Economic Development Commission, what, what I just would like to say is, please listen to the information with an open mind, the town has absolutely zero investment in this, the town does not have to put out one dollar towards the investment of this potential project that could yield, and I'm being super, super conservative when I say, and this is even much lower than they're going to tell you, but fifty thousand dollars, let's just say, and it's money that the town hasn't had, has the potential to have now, and then a lot more than that, I'm sure, and one of the things we discussed at our Economic Development Meeting, um, last night, was that if this project, after twenty-five years, the lease is up, with these panels, it does not permanently alter the landscape, these panels can be torn, put, taken down, dismantled, and it can go back to a farm, it is not going to permanently alter the landscape, as I just said, um, you know, Mark can do with what he wishes with the property, he can build houses on it if he wishes, he is, you know, he is trying to help the town in investment, yes, I'm sure he will make money, as he should, and I just asking you, this is a win-win for this community, I realize the, the current site, it, it's a site where the sunflowers are, you know, I'm also involved with Sunflower Project as well, and it's near and dear to our hearts as a community, I, I think we have to balance the, this potential for cost savings to the town with the bucolic nature of our town at the same time, and the Economic Development Commission is always thinking of this, Roger is always thinking of this, when he's talking to potential businesses that come to our, that, that may come, or are interested in coming to our community, so, I understand what you're saying, Mister Du, Mike, regarding wanting potential sites, I know Chella has a lot of information to give you, but please, um, listen to her with an open mind, because this could be a very good thing for our community, they have been working, uh, with, with us to try to find a compromise, so we benefit from it, and they can, uh, you know, put their solar panels up and do their thing, so thank you for your time, and, um, I look forward to hearing this presentation.
Thank you, Liz.
Yeah, I think it is shared.
Okay.
All right. I'm sharing my screen right now, um, there we go. So thank you for having me again, um, I will be brief, we're talking about our proposed solar project, um, on, um, on twenty-seven Forest Road, um, we have laid it out tentatively, um, this is more or less where we propose it to be, it's going to be about sixty-five hundred panels as of this layout, this little L-shaped, um, it's a gravel, um, access road, the dotted lines, I'll just try to think of what it's bigger, if I can, the dotted lines around it, um, the thicker dotted line is the, um, property line, and the thinner dotted line is the fence line, we laid it out as two separate systems, it's more or less on paper, two separate systems, um, because of the way the incentives work for virtual net metering, but it's going to be, um, a single two and a half megawatt system, this was our proposal, on the left-hand corner, you see, um, we circled some potential wetlands, that's towards Marjorie Drive and towards the back of the property that's not being cleaned, um, our engineers and our environmental scientists, they seem to think that that's going to be a flag of the wetland, before we do anything, we have to do a boundary survey and a wetcon survey, obviously, uh, with our solar scientists, um, and if that comes as we think it is, wetlands, we really cannot do anything, we cannot put any panels, we cannot approach it, um, we have, um, a hundred and fifty foot setbacks, um, as we speak right now, to, to the fence line, um, the reason why I'm pointing that out, because I think, uh, uh, you know, we've always been talking about maybe pushing the panels towards the back, we cannot touch the wetlands, and we don't wanna go towards the back, and we also don't wanna go towards the Marjorie, um, Marjorie Drive, um, view shed, all that much, that's, that's a question mark, if that doesn't turn out to be wetlands, we can probably pull some panels there, but we think most likely it's going to be, we had a few discussions, um, and, um, with Mayor Biglioni and, um, the Deputy Mayor and Mike, and we got their feedback, um, about this, um, given all of the, um, you know, concerns about the view shed from Forest Road, so our compromise, or at least our proposed compromise, is this one, you can't really see it all that much, but we moved about five hundred panels, and we pushed the view, or at least the, um, this section that you see with the dotted line with fences, about two hundred feet into Forest Road, in the previous one, it was about fifty feet, now it's about two hundred feet in, and that, you know, significantly reduces the size of our system, about five hundred panels, um, that we removed, but we, we wanted everyone, um, to be happy with the way that everything looks, there's going to be a fence around it, as we spoke about it before, um, and there's going to be all sorts of environmental studies before we submit to the Siding Council, so that's just our initial, um, compromise, so that we, uh, from Forest Road, there's not that much of a view, um, and we're going to have a planting, um, a plan, more or less, um, in front of the, uh, fence, a landscaping plan, so that we can, um, propose some plantings, there's very large trees at the, at the, um, top there, uh, uh, on Forest Road, actually, right here, we're hoping to enhance those large trees, and, um, now that we're two hundred feet away, there's not gonna be any shading issues for us anyway, um, and we'll put more right in front of the fence, and along, along the lines up here, now you see here, there's already a natural buffer, we're not gonna be cutting any trees, and here, on the satellite, it looks like there's a natural buffer, but when you actually go, there is, there's not that much, we will put a buffer here, so that the houses here don't see it actually, we're going to put a lot of plantings around here, as you can see, it's already set back from our panel, and there's not gonna be any shading concerns for our, for our purposes anyway, from this side, what we also want to focus on, on tonight's meeting, is, um, you know, I know there's a lot of concern, and I, I, I actually hear and very much appreciate that everyone's very, you know, um, it's a collaborative approach, everyone, everybody wants to have a, uh, input about the way it looks, how it might , um, look within the character of the town, et cetera, but I wanna emphasize the benefits to the town, there's not out-of-pocket costs to the town, um, only savings, no construction risk for the town, if we can't build, if we fail, if we can't get our permits, nothing happens, as if nothing happened to the town, basically, you just, you know, move on to the next thing, um, it does not impact your current power supply agreements, you can keep on buying your power, um, in, in, you know, uh, in collaboration with a third-party supplier, or with other towns, you can negotiate as low as you want with United Illuminating, this on top of it, um, the flexibility of the beneficial accounts, we can change once a year, the beneficial accounts, which the town accounts are going to be benefiting from the, um, net metering, and obviously it supports a local farm, um, you know, as, as, as we brought up before, we don't want the savings to kind of, um, not to be considered at all, because that's probably one of the biggest benefits for, to, to the town here, um, we did a quick analysis when we were sizing this project, and we looked into all of North Bramford's United Illuminating accounts, um, there's about fifteen accounts that, that more or less total, um, their annual consumption, three and a half million kilowatt hours, that is more or less what a two-megawatt solar system produces, about three-point-two million kilowatt hours, and we picked the largest nine accounts to be the beneficial accounts, which make up ninety-seven percent of consumption and ninety-two percent of, um, of the total cost, electricity cost, as of right now, and, um, and I've shown this before, but maybe, maybe we kind of really didn't go through it, the way it works is, under the virtual net metering incentive, United Illum, like, we, we build a system, um, we push the power through the three-phase lines to United Illuminating, we're just another power plant, we tell them which town we're working with, and which farm we're working with, United Illuminating credits that town and farm at the top retail rate, and, um, and then the town pays us a discounted version of that, and the difference between those two rates is the savings, the ninety thousand dollars that we've been kind of floating around right now is a very conservative approach, because we're assuming the United Illuminating rates, the generation rate, the TND rate, the transmission distribution rate is not going to go up at all, um, the first two years are the most, you know, you're, you're gonna realize the most savings are a lot more than ninety thousand dollars, and there are two different models that we can actually do, that we've been doing with different towns, we can enter, if you, if you choose to enter into a contract with us at the discounted rate, we can do a fixed-rate discount, um, like we discussed last week, or we can do a floating-rate discount, how does it work, fixed-rate discount, you lock in with, you know, discount, um, for the next twenty, twenty-five years, and, um, initially, in the, you know, in the initial years, we can foresee where things are going to go, you have a lot of savings, if we do a floating-rate contract, you're always below what UI is going to credit you, and there's a floor to it, obviously, but, um, you pay a lot more in the initial years, but you're kind of hedging yourself to be always underneath that United Illuminating, um, rate, um, you know, when you get a chance to talk to our references, and, and I'll tell you, actually, we have a bunch of, we've got a list from United Illuminating of all the towns in United Illuminating territory that is, um, under this program, that's making use of this program, um, I'll read them to you, Bridgeport, Derby, East Haven, Hampton, Melkford, North Haven, Woodbridge, um, I guess Hampton has two projects, and North Haven has three projects, um, you can talk to them, if you have a friendly relationship, and you can talk to our ever-source, um, references that, um, that we're going to provide one more time, just to be clear, um, and there are a couple of suggested, uh, I don't know why I'm not, I'm gonna see if I can make this bigger, um, there were, you know, we, we presented to different, um, you know, constituents in town, trying to get their perspective, and, and everybody's involvement, um, we will put a pollinator path around the fence, uh, we want to continue the sunflower garden around the fence, if, um, and we can have a local landscaper that was suggested to, um, that, that has been very involved with the sunflower, uh, project, and, I guess, to, to, to work with us around the buffers and the, um, plantings, um, the Board of, I, I guess, it came up in the EDC meeting, and, and I think Liz was probably the one that suggested this, um, can we have educational curriculum in partnership with the BOE and the Sustainability Committee? Yes, we always do this, um, we do build on the roofs and on the carport parking lots, et cetera, in variety of states, uh, of schools, and we always provide an educational curriculum, um, depending on how you want it to be, it could be more sustainability-focused, it could be more engineering-focused, um, we could do scheduling-guided school field trips, the reason why I'm, um, focused a little bit on the, um, schools here, the beneficiaries in almost all towns, and ninety percent of the time are the schools, because they are the biggest consumers of electricity, um, and some, there was, um, there was a suggestion, which I thought was a great suggestion, actually, because this is a farm and municipal, um, contemplated, um, a virtual net metering, uh, project, um, doing a raised canopy, right where we thought we pushed everything two hundred feet in, um, to cover that canopy's, um, top with solar panels, and make it maybe a town farm stand, or a, any kind of recreation area where the kids can actually do outside classes, you know, the world is our oyster, but we can do a, a small raised canopy, um, right, right at the front, um, we can call it a, you know, North Bramford farm stand, um, however you guys wanna name it, so we're happy to, um, put some added benefits that's going to, um, benefit the general community overall, but the biggest benefit is obviously the savings, um, to the town, um, with that, I'll just, um, stop, um, and I know we, you know, we, we did have a desired action item from our end, but I understand that you're not gonna take that action right now, so that's just, um, that's our presentation, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So how much, what's an estimated cost to decommission after whatever the contract is, twenty years or twenty-five years, what is the cost?
We can send you the cost, actually, if you, oh.
No, I'm sorry, I just cleared my throat.
Uh, we can send you the cost, you can calculate it, there's a very detailed calculation that we actually do with, um, decommissioning and hauling, I mean, trucks it's going to take, uh, with the racks taking out, with the panels taken out, some of them go close by landfill, we have to calculate, we could provide all of this to the Siding Council as a decommissioning plan, I have, you're gonna take a copy, you're gonna get a copy of this thing, anyway.
Well, my, my concern is, my concern is, if you are not in business twenty or twenty-five years from now, that the town doesn't get stuck with the decommissioning cost, because it could wipe out all of our savings.
Right.
That we had for all of those years, so.
Yes, it won't be that much, and I'll give you a calculation of how we see it, of course, for twenty-five years down the road, what decommissioning would be in today's dollars, we have a calculation, and I'm happy to give that to you, it's not going, it's not going to wipe out your savings, but you'll compare it yourself, it, on top of that, we've seen, or, and we have done this before, um, so when we go to the Siding Council, um, that permit is a non-ministerial permit, is what we call, right, um, it's an environmental assessment, it's the first step between the Siding Council and DEES that allows a project to happen, but when it comes to construction, we then have to come to town to get our building electrical, sometimes we've seen the towns actually ask us to post a decommissioning bond as part of the building permit, we've done this in Massachusetts many, many times, that's what the norm is in Massachusetts, um, and we also, um, it's a private transaction between the landlord. Um, and we also, um, it's a private transaction between the landlord and us, but this is the landlord's concern as well, right? You know, we're going in there saying that we're gonna preserve your farmland for the next twenty-five years by putting in our panels, instead of you, you know, doing a development, you know, when his kids wanna take the panels out, what's gonna happen? So there's some provisions to the landlord as well, to be able to take those out economically at the end of the, uh, at the end of the life, the life cycle. But I think a part, making it a part of the building permit is the norm that we see, so I suggest that you may, may, maybe something that you might consider.
Are there any hazardous materials?
No, actually, not, um, so I, I, I will circulate this, there's, um, this actually came up, and always, always comes up. Um, the North Carolina, um, uh, North Carolina State University's Technology, um, Department actually did a fantastic study about the common question asked, um, hazardous materials, is it landfill material? Are we gonna get, um, you know, is our water going to get contaminated, how deep do you wanna go into this, the cadmium elements, et cetera? So I don't wanna worry with all of these things right now, but I'm happy to give you a copy of this, so that you can.
But when we decommission, is any of that gonna be considered hazardous?
No, it's not going to be hazardous. It's actually, and you, if you think about it, um, there's a new program, it's called Shared Community Energy Program, and, in Connecticut. Um, it's widespread across the Northeast, but it's new in Connecticut. Um, the State Pura is giving preference for those solar projects on top of landfill and brownfields. Um, they want us to build on top of those, um, because it's a very good use of property, and, um, they permit them, um, they love it, because they don't think that we're going to be puncturing anything and bringing extra hazards material on top of that, but no, no hazardous materials.
Mike, the report she's re-rephed, is that what you sent us at five-thirty tonight? So we already have that in PDF form, right? Is that what you, okay, correct. So that was sent to all of us, already?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
Any more questions?
You've chosen this site, and I know you mentioned the last time you were here, that proximity to the state highway is of critical importance to you. But the town also has a decommissioned landways site, which is not far from Route Eighty.
Landfill?
It's, it's nothing now, I don't.
Are you talking on Cyril Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, the old dump.
I don't know what, in terms of feet it is from Route Eighty, but it's not miles from Route Eighty. Have you considered that parcel?
Um, it's a great question, we would love to consider that. Typically, the towns, before they actually, um, lease their properties, um, sometimes they choose to go for an RFP, so I really didn't be, they don't wanna be presumptuous and approach a town, a municipal property, saying that, hey, would you like to go bilateral contract on a lease? We're, we're more than happy to give you all the information, if you still wanna go to an RFP, it would be educational for you when you're considering others, and we would put our names ahead as well. Uh, but no, we didn't really approach the town, it's easier for us, and probably, uh, a little more straightforward to work with private landlord landlords. Um, if there was an RFP, we'd, we'd be more than happy to participate.
Don't. My suggestion is in lieu of where you are now, what you're talking about is in addition to.
In addition to, exactly, yeah.
Joe, the only problem is that the only way they're gonna get under this program is they have to get a farm to buy into it. If they don't get a farm to buy into it, then this program doesn't exist.
But, but, so the farm that bought into it, it doesn't matter where it is if it's virtual net metering, right? Right?
It's maybe within the area.
Well, it, yeah, but if it's.
The same power grid. I don't know if Northeast Utilities is down that way.
No, DUI, DUI.
On Cyril Road?
Yeah.
Off a nutshell?
Yeah, I think all, all, pretty much North Branford is DUI.
Everything has to be UI territory. It have, everything has to be UI territory, and we, yes, we could have picked a farm next to my house, or, you know, if, if it was in UI territory, but we, we wanted to make it a town project. We picked one of the oldest dairy farms in town, um, and, um, we think it's beneficial to them. And, um, they do actually also, um, lease some property from the same landlord to farm. Um, so it all came together, um, from our standpoint, you know? You, you, you be the judge for your perspective, we're giving you the information, of course, we're not, you know, making any, uh, presumptions here. But we think it's a, it's a, um, it all comes together, but nicely pronounced, not as North Branford.
Yeah, I, I think the issue is with Cyril Rojo is not the, um, it's not the farm issue, i- it's the, it's three-phase, I'm not sure how far three-phase power is, it's not location eighty, it's, it, it, eighty's got, obviously it's got a three-phase power, it's just how, how long she's got, the, the company's gotta pull three-phase power to get in there. And I believe it was evaluated from a previous solar company, um, and it was, I know Kurt was involved, and it was just not suitable, um.
It's the size of it, it's not as big as, it's not really all that, that big, and it's.
It's a slope is very steep.
It's one of your small, smaller level area, the rest of it.
It's sloping.
It's got a lot of shape.
Yeah. It's sloping, um, the reason why we can't build on, uh, sloping capped landfills is because, um, we typically put vertical screws into the ground, uh, you know, on a regular property, um, but in landfills, we can't puncture the, um, cap. So we have to put them on big ballast blocks, um, and you can't put the ballast blocks, uh, above fifteen-degree slope, because then they will start sliding down. And, um, so a lot of landfills are sloped, actually, and, uh, we're, we're building one in New Jersey right now in, uh, Tatcom, and that had a very steep slope as well, and when you look at it, it doesn't look that bad, but, um, the racking company and the ballast company, they will not warranty any of it, and, you know, it has to be stayed, staying on fresh stone. We couldn't get into the, you know, uh, capacity that we want, so I suspect that's what happened there, too. Plus, if you're far away from three-phase, we don't have to be close to a highway, we just have to be close to the electrical lines, three-phase electrical lines.
I tried.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move into, uh, new business, uh, discussion and action. Review, review and approval of bid, uh, number two, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Specifications for replacement of Burnham cast iron section of the boiler for North Branford Auditorium.
So Mike, is this part of, is this in their CIP? I don't remember this being in, as a capital project, so I was just wondering why we got the bid specs for this.
I don't know how they got, uh, how they're gonna pay that.
Cause I didn't remember, I mean, there was nothing presented during the budget season, and I don't remember talking about this at all, so I was just wondering why it came to us, then, if the, if the Board of Ed was paying for it themselves, why we got the bid spec for it? Because don't we generally only get them if it's in the CIP as a capital project?
Yeah, in, in, in this case, I, I think it was unforeseen and, um, I'm cast iron. Yeah. I don't recall, it's, uh... Trying to remember if this was the same one that he was looking for, Bill Chody was looking for with respect to, um, no, that was TBS that he had a problem with.
I mean, cause I've never heard of any discussion on this, that the Board of Ed has come for us, on, for the auditorium, for the boilers, so that's...
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have any notes on that. Um, and simply ta- table that for the next meeting, and have Bill Chody write up a report for the, or from the Board of Ed, as to why it came this way.
I mean, I, I just, I mean, just reading the, you know, they want it done by September first, and, you know, someone has to take action on it, and I, I just don't know where this money's coming from. Or even an estimated, I know they're going out to bid, but do they have an estimated cost? Is it a hundred thousand, fifty thousand?
I make a motion, we table it till we have further information.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion was made by Deputy Mayor Zampiano, seconded by Councilor Aplicia. Any, uh, further discussion? We have a vote, Michelle.
All in favor.
Aye.
Posed, abstained.
Okay, next is, uh, discussion on possible action, on repairs to police department.
Yeah, welcome, Chief.
How are you?
Hi, Chief.
How you doing?
Good.
So, I did this wrong.
Yeah.
So as you know, there has been, uh, we, we found a leak in the attic. With that, we found mold in the attic, and we did an air quality test, um, and it was confirmed with the air quality test. So I believe it was, I'm not sure what meeting it was, but one of the counselors had mentioned, maybe if we had some funds left in this year's budget to allocate the funds towards a repair. So, so with that, I had no idea how much it would cost to repair, or even replace the, uh, sorry, replace the, uh, the roof. So with that, we got a... We got a couple quotes, um, the first one was to, uh, a total replacement of the roof, uh, with mold mediation, uh, came out for about sixty-six thousand dollars, plus we also located mold in the, uh, the basement. Um, there was an additional, let me see if I can find it, I believe six thousand dollars to mediate the mold in the basement, along with, um, uh, scoping our septic system down in the basement. Um, the, the question was posed, well, could we put a patch on it to fix? Um, so we, we went back, we got a second, second estimate, the patch, um, to, to get us, hopefully for a couple of years, would be thirty-three thousand nine hundred ten. Uh, we would not, um, do any, any work on the septic system, uh, just mediate the mold, uh, in the basement. And, uh, this, this is would be the idea that we were building the new police department. Um, so we're looking for direction as to how we wanna go with this, what we wanna do, is it worth? I don't know what the plans are for the, the old building, um, after we're done, do we wanna put a new roof on it? Do we wanna just patch it? Um, and of course, this will probably have to go out the bid.
So it's like thirty-three to sixty-six, basically, it's where you're?
That's what I have, like.
Did they say how many squares on the roof?
Um, it's still, uh, they talked about the sheet, uh, the plywood, uh, there was, they estimated thirty, thirty boards for the plywood, thirty sheets.
That's the, it's the whole roof, Chief, the thirty sheets?
That's, that's a whole roof, that's, uh, thirty sheets is a whole roof.
No, that's thirty sheets is a whole roof.
Oh, I'm sorry, it, it says, uh...
But they're probably estimating, I gotta need that.
Strip, strip existing roof shingles down to plywood, coordinate with removal locations of police equipment on the, uh, the roof area. In other words, that's the antennas, this cost does not include, remember, our antenna is on the roof, um, as well as the microwave, so, um, we had tried to get a quote from Tactical to see what that would cost, uh, however, they haven't responded yet. Um, the estimate, the estimate includes removal and replacement of thirty sheets of sheathing. Uh, additional sheets, sheets will be charged as needed, cut holes in the roof area in six locations, add soffits, three new power roof, uh, cooling fan vents, and soffit, uh, six soffit vents. Create openings and support framing for three fan units and six soffit vents, and I'm, I'm sure that that's to prevent mold from, from growing in the future. Uh, furnish and install Atlas ice and water shield over the entire roof. Finish install new metal edging and rake on eaves, install Atlas, I'm sorry, I got something that keeps on popping up here. Uh, pinnacle pristine architectural shingles, install and finish, uh, while flashing is furnished and install new shingle over ridge vent. Furnish all three electrical powered vents with thermostatic controls and remove and dispose of all debris.
Doesn't say how many square, though, yeah, no.
So is that the repair or the whole new roof?
That's, that's a whole new roof.
Okay.
So they're gonna scrape off all the shingles and replace what, they're estimating at least thirty boards, plywood. It would be an additional cost.
If there's more than thirty.
If there's more than that. So with that, to scrape off all the shingles, we have to take the antennas off the, off the roof.
Which, which the sixty-six.
I, I don't know if you have to really take the antennas off. Well, we're waiting, we're waiting for.
Yeah. Those, those antennas should be fixed with the, the, uh, rubber mounting around them, but, but those are secured to, you know, frame.
That's why we're waiting for Tactical, who hasn't, hasn't responded to us yet, he's been, uh, very slow during this, during this time.
So the, the either cost, the sixty-six or the thirty-three, does not include any removal of the antenna or anything like that? If it had to be.
Or, or coordination with Tactical, correct?
Okay.
I would say send it out the bid and see what we get back.
I mean, more than likely, we're gonna, as a town, we're probably gonna keep the building, right? We're not gonna tear the building down, just leave an empty lot, more than likely, correct?
I wouldn't say that that's more than likely.
No?
Is there a use for the building? We, everything we've heard about the building is that it's outdated and marginal service.
I think Franny has expressed that he could use it for storage and what have you, and then I, I'm just trying to think rationally, is it, is it worth it if we, if we could do something with the building to put a new roof on it? Or if it's something that we're just gonna tear down, then obviously not, but...
Well, see, it's not built according to specifications to redo it into a police department, uh, extensive, extensive, you know, structural work.
Correct, but could it be something else?
Uh, yeah.
To use it as storage, to, to use it as offices up above, that, you know, aren't emergency, you know, oriented, um, is a different story.
Some people, like, talked about repurposing it as a community room to have, have events and stuff like that.
Oh, and all the fields there could be a concession stand.
So I, you know, I, I think it'd be best, you know, we might get that company from what, East Haven, Michael, that did the loggerhouse and the Old Town Mall.
Hmm, yeah.
Um, you know, but we didn't know they were around until we put that out to bid.
Right.
You know, so I, I would say it's not gonna cost us anything to put it out the bid, let's put it out the bid and see what the new roof will cost.
And, and, and what, what about looking at this?
The power ventilators.
Yeah, and what about looking at this as two separate projects? Um, to, to me, I, I don't know, the, the whole basement remediation, the, the mold issue, if you wanna get a jump on, to me, that's the most concerning, uh, to get a jump on that, pull that, pull that out, it's under the threshold. Uh, you, you gotta, you gotta quote, if, if you're inclined to, you know, to me, that, that, I would attack that first, get that underway, get that going, and then while, while you're putting out the bid for the, for the roof, if that makes sense, in my mind, that's how I'd, I'd go at it.
But you're gonna have to get three quotes for the remediation.
Well, for the remediation, yeah, but you got one already, and...
The mold has to go out the bid, too?
No, it'd just be quoted, uh, because it's under the, well, this one quote is under the threshold.
Yeah, you got three separate companies coming in.
So if you're under seventy-five hundred, then you can just get three quotes.
But does it make sense, you're talking about starting the remediation before you fix the roof?
This is in the basement.
Oh, ju- or just the basement?
Yeah, yeah, the basement remediation.
Personnel are going down to that basement all the time.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it makes sense, to sequence that, start that while you, you know, throw it out to bid and then get the roof done as soon as you can.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, it makes sense.
So we should get a cost on, as far as a roof, a repair and, and or new?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we proceed with the remediation of the mold in the basement. And we proceed with RFPQ, whatever you wanna call it, go out to bid for the roof. And then by then, you know, hopefully within a month.
A repair or a total replacement, Mike, of the roof?
Total replacement.
Why not do both?
I would think we'd do both, can't hurt.
Put both out to bid?
Sure.
No, no, do a new roof and a repair, you know, at, like an,
Add alternate kind of.
An add alternate?
We know, we know the roof is stapled down, so in order to repair the roof, you're gonna have to re-s, renail every one of those shingles because those staples are all rusted out and it's gonna pick up. So, I mean, there's no sense in, I, I did my, my roof was stapled, I did it last year. And I had to do it because all the staples rusted. And there's only probably a few left in there and they don't do staples anymore, they only do nails now. So I experienced that firsthand. Because my roof was at my house, put on the same time the roof that the police department was put on.
Before we make the commitment to a whole new roof, don't we really wanna answer Ron's question? Is there a use for that building after we replace, police station, want a new, a new station house? Because I distinctly remember somebody telling us that building has marginal to no value once the police move out of it.
I don't know if it has no value, four walls, a roof and a, you know, and a basement has value.
If it's got a use, I'm all for spending the money. But if what it's gonna be is on the bad end of a wrecking ball in two or three years, then we wanna do the cheapest repair possible.
Right.
Well, yeah, we also gotta think, keep in mind too, that if we make, if we, if we keep a building, you know, there's gonna be periodic maintenance has to be done to it. And if we're not, if we don't end up utilizing it, then, you know, we end up, we end up with something that we have to take care of that we have no use for.
Well, that's why, that's why, that's why I wanted to put it out to bid, see what the bids come back, install a new roof on that. You know, we got one person's opinion.
Right.
We don't, we don't have a cost. This way we can see, is it gonna cost us twenty-five thousand dollars, the same as the Old Town Hall? Which everybody quotas the price of fifty thousand.
Right.
And it was, I believe, Michael, was half the cost, right?
It was a good, yeah, it's a good.
So let's, let's see what it costs us to put a roof on that building in real numbers. And, you know, the remediation, I would, I would put that out to bid and see what that's costing, remedying that. You know, instead of going.
Right, but we, my also, it might also be important too to, to put that, I, I agree, put that out, find out what a new roof's gonna really cost out to bid, but also what a repair's gonna cost. I mean, right now, the repair costs thirty-three thousand, round numbers, right?
Um, Yeah, thirty-three nine ten plus twenty-eight fifty, just, just for the.
So we should have that bid out too, so then we have two options.
What, how are they comparing it, did they say? Yeah, not, um, Uh, to provide a minimal repair, existing roof is a stopgap until the new police headquarters is constructed and ready for occupancy. Provide this on a time material basis, which include locating effective areas contributing to water infiltration, removing the shingles and damaged plywood, applying underlayment and patching the shingles, no guarantee on color match. Our hourly rate is seventy-six, seventy-six now. See, they did a repair on the south side of that building, ready decided that building, what, five years ago, six years ago? Capacit did it.
I don't think it, I don't think it hurts to get both.
That was less than five years ago?
And it, and it.
Capacit?
Yeah, I think so, six years ago. There's still, there's still, even if you replace the whole roof, there still has to be some mold remediation in the attic.
Right.
Because the mold is on the rafters and.
Right. Yeah, the mold, that's a, that has to, you know, that definitely has to be seen.
And the other thing you might wanna consider is what, what, so you're gonna use it for? Because if, if you're gonna have as many people that's in it now, maybe a storage facility might be something that you can use it for. You still have the septic issues. The, the pipes.
So here, Mike, this is what I was thinking of. If you put it out to bid for both, at least we're doing it now. If for some reason we put it out just for new and then we start thinking about it more and we realize that the septic's an issue, maybe we don't wanna use the building and stuff like that, now we would have to put it out to bid again at that point later down the road for a repair. Whereas if we just do it now, we'll have the information sooner and then it gives us, still gives us time to think about what we wanna do.
What I'm, what I'm saying is I don't wanna waste thirty thousand dollars trying to save that roof when that roof's at its life expectancy.
So let's just say we're not gonna use that building.
If we're spending, if you're spending, what do, what do you quote, thirty-three thousand for the roof?
For the patch?
Yeah.
For the repair, yeah.
Yeah, thirty-three nine ten. Thirty-three nine, we did the whole Old Town Hall for twenty-five and we haven't even put out the bid yet, so. And they're stapled, so there's no way you're gonna save that whole roof. And it's at its life expectancy. So, so even if you do the patch job to it, what is the expectancy of the patch job? They're just saying to hold it over till we get a new police department. Are you gonna have the same issue three or four years down the line with it starting to leak again and creating mold again? You have, have the issue over again. For the, the complete job, it's sixty, well, they quote it sixty-five, six, six, three.
So I guess my concern is, we put it out to bid for new and let's just say we get, say the lowest we get is fifty-five, just for argument's sake.
Then we come back here and we talk about it. We're no different than we are now, but at least we have, at least we have a full price.
Right, but then. Right, but then this is a couple months down the road and now we gotta talk about repairs and we've lost a couple months and they're still in there with those problems for a couple months. If we just do both now, we still have, we could still do whatever we want down the road, but at least we're one step ahead of the game and we can act sooner.
Yeah, I think we should definitely go both options. It's just that we're just getting numbers.
Yeah.
There's no commitment one way or the other.
Then we make a decision based on the numbers. And, and if we decide yea or nay on the longevity of the, the.
I agree with you though, if it comes in at twenty-five below the thirty, then yeah, absolutely, but it may not, you know?
No, that's, that's my only concern is, is you have a thirty-three thousand dollar repair on a twenty-five, twenty-six year old roof? And your shingles are guaranteed, they're warranty for twenty-five years?
Yeah, they're only gonna patch, they're only, they, they say they're only gonna patch.
Yeah, so you got, you got the rest of the roof that you're not, you're not even gonna touch.
I, I would like to see the options, both, both options.
I agree.
I mean, it doesn't cost anything more.
Yeah, it can't hurt.
Yeah.
I mean, if we decide to keep the building, I agree with you, Mike, we can go with, think, but if we're not gonna keep the building, I, I don't see why we can't see two prices.
But, and on the remediation, so there's, the remediation of the mold in the rafters and everything else would get taken care of when we repair or replace the roof? And then there's mold in the basement, so that's a separate, I mean, that's another remediation.
Correct, yeah, so, so yeah, the, the abatement and remediation in the act is included in the, the patch job.
Right, okay. And then the, so we talked about doing the remediation in the basement because that's, we can start that now, that is separate from the roof area.
Yeah, that should be done as soon as possible, I, I agree.
And that, because it's under the threshold of seventy-five hundred, we just need to get three quotes and we can move ahead with that.
Right. Part of it is, I thought that you wanted to know if we could cover any of the nineteen, twenty budget, if we had some, some funds. And, and I think we certainly can cover the remediation in the basement. We, I think that we can cover the, the, the patch, the patch job also. You know, this, the COVID thing really had a significant impact on the police department, it slowed it down quite a bit, our spending went down. So, so we were able to show some savings, so. That was, I don't, I think it was mentioned at one of the last meetings, that was that, that's why I brought it up.
Okay. So, so we would like you to, I guess the consensus of the council is to get three quotes on the remediation for the basement area, so that we can start that right away. And then we want to put out an RFPQ, whatever it's called, for the, for the roof and the remediation.
New and a patch.
A new and a patch.
I have a question, on, on the mold remediation, does that have to be done by a certified or qualified person, not just a, a roof contractor?
This, this is not just a roof contractor.
Okay, that's, that's why I'm asking.
And I'm sure that they would probably sub it out.
Okay.
Would be my guess.
Alright, because there must be some documentation that goes with that, yeah.
Oh, there has to be, I'm sure.
Okay.
And is it possible to have that RFP in two weeks at our next council meeting, so that we can approve and get that out? We can.
I would, yeah.
Because there's only one meeting in August and.
Bid, bid specs back for two weeks from tonight.
Right.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a roof bid with, and I think it's pretty straightforward, but I don't know how much documentation or data that can be, you know, taken from, from the proposal, but I'll work with the chief. I, I don't, I can't say what hurdles, I don't see.
Well, I mean, we just, we just did the roof proposal for the Old Town Hall and the Auger House, so you can start with that as a base.
Yeah.
You can take the Old Town Hall and just change the building size.
Right, right. Yeah, shouldn't, right, we can use that as a template to.
And, and then you do that. And then you do the addendum for the repair.
But I think that the, the part that you're gonna have a problem with is, is that you have to have somebody that's qualified to do the mold.
Right.
Which knows it because you just can't have a roofer come in.
Right.
Right, correct.
That'll have to be in, in addition to. Well, it's gonna be a, Chief's saying it's a specialized company, or unless they, they sub it out, the roofer's gonna go then team up with.
Yeah, I'm sure the roofer, you're just gonna address it and then the roofer subs it out.
Yep.
As long as they have a certified.
Right, they're gonna have to be.
Mold specialist, it'd be all set.
Right. Yeah, certified remediation specialist or whatever the terminology or certifications are to be able to handle that, yeah, okay.
But in order to keep the project moving and to get this done, if, if possible, I would like to see the, the bid for approval at the next council meeting. And on, on the other one, the remediation for the basement part, once you get the three quotes, you don't have to come back to us, you can just go ahead and do that, right?
Just go, right, yeah, right, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think the other, the last piece is just tying in Tactical, I guess, and getting to in terms of the determination on the antennas.
They're pretty much a sole source provider anyway, so I guess whatever, whatever cost it costs, I don't think we have to choose.
Right, no. But just to have numbers and to.
Okay.
Sound good, Chief?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, there was part of a motion made, but is nothing needed?
No.
Okay.
No, because we're going out for an RFPQ.
Okay.
Okay.
And they got, they're just doing quotes on the remediation of the basement.
Okay, I won't remove that.
Okay, next we have, uh,
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, you're safe.
Thank you.
We have a discussion of possible action to approve a, a community art mural for the Poco Festival grounds.
Yeah, um, Carrie's here. Carrie, you wanna come forward?
Sure.
Yeah, there was an issue with the, the Rec Commission and getting a, a meeting for them and that, so they, that's why this landed on the, the council's agenda, is to have a presentation to understand it and give the blessing that we're gonna essentially put a, a project, temporary project up on, on town property for, and I'll let Carrie go through with the presentation and explanation.
Sure, so, um, there has been a proposal.
Yeah.
There has been a proposal for a community art mural. It was proposed by a resident through one of the North Brankford Community Facebook pages. And it was bumped over to myself and Parks and Rec to get involved and try to help this project come to be. So, the, um, the proposal is to put up a temporary eight by eight wood canvas on the Potato and Corn Festival grounds, since those grounds aren't going to be utilized this year. The art mural would be not facing twenty-two, it would be actually right on the edge of the gravel lot, facing the softball field, the entrance to the Public Works Department. Reason being is, I think, putting it in that position would hopefully deter people from doing something inappropriate. It has less of an audience and the Public Works Department drives past it early morning every day, so it would be, it would be seen. One side of the art mural, when people would bring their own paints and they would artistically express themselves. And on the other side, it would be a chalkboard finish where people could write inspirational messages. It was our thought to have a theme, perhaps some of the ideas that have been discussed are if we wanted to do something coronavirus related and have a silver linings theme to it. Or if we wanted to do something Potato and Corn Festival related, since we're not having the festival, had a, a Poco Memories art board. What else?
How, how big did you, did you say?
It's an eight by eight piece of, basically it's just plywood.
Two pieces of plywood?
Mm-hmm, and the materials have already been, it's already been proposed that a resident will donate the materials. They will build the structure and Public Works will put up the structure to make sure that it's, it's safe. This would also, having it right off of twenty-two, it would also allow people like our seniors that are homebound to have an opportunity to.
Hold on, I can't right now.
To take a, to take a ride and drive by it and be able to see the art mural without having to get out of the car or to stop up traffic at all.
So it's at the edge of the parking lot in the grass area or the?
It's gonna be in the grass area, or that little gravel air, that little gravel.
Where the bus is turning around.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Premier Park, yeah.
Correct, in Premier Park.
Get his Poco terms, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, Premier Parking Lou, let me use Lou terms. So it'd be in between those trees where the premier parking is, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, and I just really liked the idea. I thought it would be a great opportunity to, you know, have something that people could come out and do safely. You know, take a little pride in a project, be a part of something, be creative, something fun.
And it's not gonna cost us anything.
It is not gonna cost us anything.
Oh, that's amazing.
I guess, I guess my concern is what happens if there's inappropriate stuff put on it, then how is that taken care of?
So, what, we've already thought about that.
I'm, I'm sure you did.
So, again, that's why we would have it facing not the main road, because that's just asking for somebody to
Right.
do something. We would also post, depending on what we decide as a theme, we would also, as a department, we would come up with guidelines. And we would reserve the right to remove something that was offensive or inappropriate.
I really like the idea, but I, I have the same concerns that Rose does and just even, I mean, people get their mailboxes smashed all the time in town and stuff like that. Is there any way that you could put plexiglass over both sides and let an artist be up there for like a month at a time? And then take the pe- plexiglass down to protect the art underneath and, and further deter somebody from messing with their art or what have you?
I mean, I think that's a, that's, to your point, I think that's a really great suggestion. I mean, I think that's a, that's, to your point, I think that's a really great suggestion, yes. Unfortunately, we have to kind of think about the downside of things, but I'd like to believe, the optimistic, eternal optimist in me would like to believe that this could be a fun project that people could just kind of be a part of. And it would be something that's temporary too, so I'm just thinking maybe for a month, put it up. Um, July is National Parks and Recreation Month, so, um, it's just one way we can try to highlight an activity. I mean, I'm not opposed to maybe doing one artist at a time, but I think it takes the fun out of it to be like, you know, grab your family, hey guys, let's grab our paintbrushes, we're gonna go, you know, paint on the community mural today.
Well, then, I, if you're gonna do it that way, how do you keep, how do you keep it from just looking like, I'm sorry, but like a nightmare of people just constantly painting over each other, like...
Well, if it gets that much attention, perhaps we could add a second board.
So it's just something for people to go doodle on?
It's just something to do, exactly, it's, it's something, yes, yes.
What, what happens in the end of the temporary period, whatever that is?
So, there's a couple things that could happen, we could just take it down and be done with it. If we go with the Poco Memories, I thought like, which might be something we could display at next year's...
Right.
You know, at the information booth, um, if we could put it into storage, and we can pull it out and, you know, hey, remember that twenty-twenty year? Um, and we could bring it out and display it as, as part of the, you know, history and part of the, the festival.
Right, because isn't next year like the twentieth year, right? Because this was supposed to be the twentieth year, but it just got delayed a year.
Right, technically it gets bumped.
Right.
Who knows, maybe this might even roll into, uh, annual thing, that we have a, a community art mural where people could write things or about the festival every year, and we could start something, I don't know.
So do you only wanna do it for a month?
We don't have to only do it for a month.
'Cause the other thing I'm thinking of, just, um, it just popped in my head when Rose said that, is if you do, if, if you, not that I'm totally trying to push my idea, but if you, if you took that idea and you had somebody a week at a time...
Yeah.
Down the road, you could, and you kept to your theme, the Poco theme, you could then potentially, uh, have the community involved, maybe put it in the newspaper and have people vote on their favorite piece of artwork, and then that's the one that could be displayed next year at the twentieth anniversary of the Poco Festival, or something like that.
I mean, that's an idea as well. I wanna be able to encourage residents of all ages to, to do this as well. So I want, you know, the, the three-year-old to be able to, you know, I don't know, draw a yiracorn.
Doodle.
Um, you know, or the, the ninety-three-year-old that, that wants to write a message of inspiration, so... This is not only a community project, but it's something that's, you know, intergenerational as well.
You're right, but the location's good, because you have the cops to hang out there once in a while. You have Franny's guy that's all around that, and whoever goes there and destructing, those cops stations right there, so it's probably one of the better places in town for that.
Right. And it's easy to get to, easy access and not backing up...
It is, and it's not gonna jam up traffic, yeah.
Yeah, you have a place to park and, so you just need our approval, is that, is that it?
I do, I'm just...
And then you guys will come up with the idea and coordinate everything else?
I am, I'm just seeking approval and, you know, feedback and input into the idea and, you know, to, just to, to push my agenda. Um, that, I just really think that, you know, the, the concept of, of art definitely, um, you know, helps individuals emotionally and socially, and that's something that we're really missing right now during this quarantine, so...
I'd like to try it.
All right, so I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve the community art mural on the Poco Festival grounds as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion was made by Councilman Delone, seconded by Council, Councilman, uh, Policia. Any more, any further discussion?
So there'll be posted guidelines, I'm assuming?
Yes, we will post them on our social media page, we will post them on our website, and we will also laminate and post physical guidelines right there on the art mural as well.
Okay. Can I have a vote, Michelle?
You may, you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stayed?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Nice job.
Thanks.
Michael, we have citizens' statements and petitions, do you have anything?
Let me check.
I have two on Facebook, Mike.
Okay, well, I, go ahead, what do you have on Facebook, Anthony?
Uh, the first one is from Antonio Giuseppe, when will the meetings be open to the public? You have no problem opening when you want money. Um, the second one is from Cliff Potter about the basketball court abuse issue. Shouldn't you also be, be all-town courts, Norfolk as well? It also seems that the Norfolk soccer field is used heavily by non-residents as well.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any via email.
Okay, thanks, Anthony.
Thank you, Ed.
Uh, how about a five-minute, five-minute break? Before we go into executive session? Okay, let's do that.
Um, you wanna...
Or why don't you, yeah, just a motion into...
I'll, I'll make a motion to move into executive session to include the town manager and the town attorney. Is he in on this?
Yep, then you're still there?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, he muted, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I, yes, I am.
We're a motion to go into executive session, we're gonna take just a five-minute, uh, break and then, and then resume.
Okay.
Thanks.
I've been, I've been following along.
Okay, great.
Okay.